Ready?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Okay, I'll call meeting orders for the Sherman County Commission, August 4th.
Throw a call, please.
Commissioner Kaufman.
Here.
Commissioner Chadwick.
Here.
Commissioner Bertollio.
Here.
Chairman Henry.
Here.
Commissioner Mill. He is here.
He will be here. I'd please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
There's Jim at the back of the room. He was in on the pledge. Sorry we started a little quick. Okay. We have approval of the consent agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the consent agenda.
I would second.
Been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Everyone in favor of approval of the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carried. Okay, we have public hearings. The first hearing we have is, uh... The public hearing for CUP 20-1. Is there a report from staff?
Certainly, Ms. Chairman, Commissioners. CUP 20-1, it's a conditional use permit for land development and application by Jamon Tretto. Requesting location, the applicant is requesting a conditional use permit for land reclamation to improve his land and to make it more suitable for his use provided proper and provide proper drainage. The property is located south of CY Avenue on Douglas Road. The address is 3799 Douglas Road. This is right off of CY, just south of the old Farnham's furniture, and then it became the chop shop. And Douglas Road is the road that goes right beside there, and there's a boat performance place. Mr. Tretto's property is right directly south of the boat performance place. The parcel is approximately 2.24 acres. Again, that's kind of a busy map, but you can see the larger parcel there to the north of the red is the boat parcel. Across the road is the former Farnham's that was the chop shop. Zoning around there, it's to the far north is completely city of Casper. The subject property is commercial. Further to the south is light industrial. You can see Douglas Road there clearly now. Here's an aerial of the subject property. The subject property is in the pink or the red box there, just south of the... You can see all the boats stored there, just to the north. General information. A CUP is required for land reclamation in a field that's not associated with a building permit and not controlled by the regulations of other governmental agencies. A letter issued was... A letter was issued to the applicant to apply for a CUP for unpermitted land reclamation. The planning department had received complaints about drainage from the subject property onto Douglas Road and adjacent properties as a result of the grading without proper engineering. The applicant is applying for a general site grading to provide for positive drainage away from the existing buildings and to prevent storm water draining onto adjacent properties. So, um, back on that back photograph here, you can see there's a large vacant lot right here. The applicant has since built a building right here. You'll see in the next slides. Here's the building and some land reclamation. Dirt work was done there to the south. Uh, you can see this is earlier in the year when we still had snow on the ground, and you can see there's evidence of some... The snow was melting and the moisture was going down there and causing issues on Douglas Road. Again, this is looking to the north. Um, you can see the new building there and some T-posts that were installed. Again, this is land development that he has done to try to better his lot, but it's caused some drainage concerns, and through this conditional use permit application that he's given us, he has addressed these concerns, and we'll get into detail here in a few more slides. So this slide is his proposed improvements, and what he's planned here is all the drainage is gonna come... I'm gonna grab this mic. The drainage will head to the northwest corner of the property. He's got this as proposed gravel. He's got a concrete apron directly to the north of the proposed building. He's got a gathering, a low point right here that where he's got riprap, and he's planned a 12-inch culvert that goes underneath his driveway approach, and then that water would drain down the east side of Douglas Road, then going down to CY Avenue or the highway departments right away. We had extensive conversations with the highway department. They do not have problems with this water making it to the highway department right away. Also, part of this conditional use permit is you need to address ingress and egress from your property. So the applicant is proposing they will install six inches of road mill tailings on Douglas Road, crown Douglas Road, so that that drainage stays on the east side of Douglas Road and then drains down to CY Avenue. Conditional use permit criteria. Will granting the CUP contribute to an overburden of county services? The applicant's response, no, the proposed grading plan and recycled asphalt surfacing improvements will improve the site for better access to the entire property. The grading plan also includes an updated grading of Douglas Road, providing improved access that is not only to the site but to the adjacent properties as well. Douglas Road is one of those dedicated to the public roads, but there's no county maintenance. So, um, the overall idea with this area is we have another conditional use permit in the workings that's a little further to the south here on Douglas Road. We've had multiple phone calls with all of the property owners. Our understanding is they're working toward forming an improvement service district for the maintenance of this road and perhaps even Tavara's, which is the next road over to the east. So the property owners are in conversation to form an improvement service district. Mr. Tretto would do his part right there for his, and with the hope of the department is we would get an ISD formed, and then that ISD then would maintain the capital investment that's been put into Douglas Road. Staffs propose finding a fact that grading and drainage improvements will make Douglas Road and the subject property more accessible for emergency response and any additional services. Douglas Road is not maintained by Natrona County but is dedicated to the use of the public. Will granting the CUP cause undue traffic, parking, population density, or environmental problems? Applicant's response, the increased traffic or the need for additional parking is not expected with the proposed grading improvements. Staffs propose finding a fact, by permitting land reclamation for drainage and grading as designed by WLC, there will not be any negative impacts to traffic, parking, population density, or environmental problems. Will granting the CUP impair the use of adjacent property or alter the character of the neighborhood? Applicant's response, this will improve the use of adjacent property and will not alter the character of the neighborhood in a negative way. By regrading of Douglas Road, it will direct storm water runoff to the east side of the road, minimizing impacts to adjacent westernly properties. Adding recycled base to the road will improve the look of the road, increase the access, and reduce existing erosion. Staffs propose finding a fact, by grading and improving for drainage on the subject property and Douglas Road, the CUP will not impair the use of adjacent properties or alter the character of the neighborhood in a negative way. And lastly, will granting the CUP detrimentally affect public health, safety, and welfare, nullify the intent of the development plan or the zoning resolution? Applicant's response, the proposed grading plan will clean up the existing area, provide for a hard surface to reduce vehicle tracking of mud off-site, and improve rodent control. Existing areas to receive recycled asphalt surfacing will include the removal of weeds and unsightly vegetation, allowing for better fire control of the area. Staffs propose finding a fact, the grading plan will provide for drainage, hard surfacing, improved access, and stabilization of the southern property boundary. This will not be detrimental to public health, safety, and welfare. With an approved CUP, the land reclamation will be in compliance with the development plan and the zoning resolution. Public comment, to date, Natrona County Development Department has received no written comments on this agenda item. One property owner did speak at planning and zoning with concerns with impacts to their property and a desire to maintain quality access. Staff sent out notices to 14 neighbors. Staff also spoke with Wyoming Department of Transportation. There was no concerns with this permit. The drainage and the culvert along CY Avenue have been sized appropriately enough to handle the additional flows from this site. Proposed motion, after March 10th, 2020 meeting, the planning commission recommended approval of this agenda item incorporating findings of fact with the following conditions. One, the land reclamation shall be completed by the applicant and inspected by the county engineer within 12 months of the B.O.C.C. approval. And two, if upon inspection is determined that remediation of drainage is required, plans will be presented to staff and brought back to planning zoning for review and approval. You'll notice there's a delay there, March 10th, 2020, planning zoning, and then today. We did ask that this be tabled. The idea was to give the property owners more time to get this ISD conversation rolling. Our understanding is Chad Westbrook, the guy just south of the subject property, is the organizer of that. We had conversations with him. He has some paperwork ready to submit to the state. I know we've got an adjacent property owner here tonight. Maybe he can give us some more insight also, but that was the reason for the delay. We wanted to provide more time to get the improvement service district formation going. These improvements, while they will be great, while they will go in, they won't be long-lasting without some form of maintenance on them. With that, I'd answer, any questions the commission may have?
Any questions for staff?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes?
Uh, Jason, uh, just go right back to that picture. Was that cut there before the building went in, or did they make that cut and then put the building in?
They made the cut after the building was there, and this cut is part of the land reclamation that we're asking them to address.
Okay, so...
Let me go back to there. They have planned, I think, three-to-one slopes?
Uh, two-to-one with erosion control blanket on the side.
Okay.
So they're gonna... They're gonna backfill that cut with two-to-one with erosion mat is their plan.
Okay, so the... I guess what I'm asking is, was the putting of the building in caused... Was it... Was there drainage before the building was put in? And did they... Did they modify the... I guess what I'm getting at is, this is what my pet peeve about causing drainage by changing the landscape to affect offset properties. Is this one of those cases where the building, as well as the subsequent work around the building, did that cause the drainage issue to start with, or was it there? Was it pre-existing?
I would believe the building and the development of the property is what where we ended up with it.
Okay.
To a broader conversation, it would be great, and when we modify our zoning resolution, to have site plans submitted with our commercial development so that we can evaluate what's happening on the site rather than just the blinders of just the building, and then we get the building in and property owners do some improvements, and now we have drainage problems.
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions? I've got one for you on that picture right there. When they do the two-to-one slope, they're gonna be right next to the neighbor's property. Does there any setbacks or anything? You've got some heavy equipment right there. Would that tend to slough off, or would that slope hold that on there?
You know, I'll defer that to... We do have WLC Engineering here tonight, and I'll defer that when he comes up.
Okay, that'd be one. And then the drainage is probably gonna come this way, anything that's water that's back there by the excavator. It's gonna come around, and then how far up the hill does that go for the water flow? And I know it's engineered in there, but a 12-inch pipe, it's gonna drop three... It's gonna drop about, uh, three feet in 48-foot, which is all right, but 12 inches is really tough to keep clean. So 18 might be a better culvert to put in there, just to keep it clean, 'cause they silt up, and 48-foot is really tough. But it's engineered in there, and so I don't have any problem with it, but just the owners might do it. I know out in the oil field, it's really tough to keep those, even 18-inch culverts clean. So you're gonna spend that much for a 12-inch. It might not be that much more to do an 18, but just an idea. Okay, other questions? Okay, thank you. All right. We'll open the public hearing for CUP 20-1. The public hearing will be held in accordance with Wyoming State statute, rules of Natrona County Commission, and other applicable laws. I would ask those individuals who wish to address the commission to approach the lectern and give your full name and address for the record. All those in... Anyone in favor? Come on up.
I jumped the gun there. Apologize.
That's fine.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, my name is Brad Holwagner with WLC Engineering, located at 200 Pronghorn. We are the engineer on the project, and I looked a little closer. The worst slope off there is a two-and-a-half-to-one.
Okay.
Two-and-a-half-to-one, 2.8-to-one. He does own up to the top of that slope, so we tried to slope it as best we can. That's why we wanted to go with the erosion control blanket on there, too, to get some vegetation growing on there, keep it more stable. We didn't have a lot to work with with how wide that building was. We wanted to give enough drive aisle for him to get back, back in and out there. So I'd definitely be happy to answer any questions you guys may have.
Any questions? No, I... I think it looks good. I like projects like that, just as long as everything's protected.
Yeah, it's a unique situation with the gravel road, keeping the drainage on one side.
Okay.
A lot of big trucks coming up and down.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Yes, sir.
I'm Chad Asfarnum, right across the way, the west side of it, 3796 Douglas. I like everything that's finally getting accomplished here. I think the most important thing is seeing it done and see if that culvert actually works to keep the water off the adjacent properties and everybody else's, but it looks like they really did their due diligence. Thanks, Jason, as well. If it gets done, I think then we can put the maintenance project that we talked about with all the property owners together, and then we can present that, too, as well. It's hard to do until we see the finished results and make sure everything's sloped correctly, but it sure sounds like we're finally going in the right direction. I appreciate everybody's effort.
Okay, any question?
Any questions for me?
Thank you.
Thank you.
The water used to go right across the road and right onto you.
Right to my warehouse, and it was really becoming an issue, but it sounds like everything's being addressed at this point. And I was talking to Chad Westbrook, and we really can't present anything quite yet because we gotta see how this turns out, make sure we're not missing anything, and now above us, and above Mr. Tretto, too, which is not his responsibility. Like I think you guys heard, they're just making a mess up there. I don't know who's doing what up there, but they decided to start digging into, and that's releasing a lot of dirt and mud when it rains, if it rains again, and Casper should someday. We missed it all this spring, which is good for the mud, but seems like right above us, so Mr. Tretto's gonna have a hard time, and so am I with the mud coming above us now. So he's gonna do all this work, and it can be covered up in one bad storm from the people above us now. So I think there's... Unfortunately, we're gonna have this meeting again. That's how I see it after almost 30 years up there. We never had these problems prior to the tearing up of this hillside and whatnot, but hopefully it works out.
Okay.
So, any more questions for me?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? I'll close the public hearing. Any questions? Is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I would move to approve CUP 20-1 to include the proposed finding of fact.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Commissioner Mill.
This is a question for the staff for the motion. There appears to have been a condition to add that, or... Yes.
Did you say proposed finding of fact?
I did.
Staff would propose that we follow the planning zoning's two conditions, and that is the land reclamation shall be completed within 12 months, inspected by the county engineer, and two, upon inspection, if we find additional drainage that needs to be remediated, we come up with a plan and bring it back to planning and zoning.
And that... That motion would cover that?
Okay. Perfect.
Is that right?
Yep.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I do have a question, and this is for Jason, and this is to Mr. Farnum's point. So we're hopeful, and there's stuff going on up top, and I mean, does that... Do we just hold our breath and wait for that to come to us next, or what are we... What are we thinking on that?
So, as an update, further to the south and on the west side of the road, there is another property that's had some dirt work. I believe that's the one we're being spoke about. We have had code enforcement issues. We have gone to court. The applicant has applied for a conditional use permit, and we are optimistic we're gonna get that to planning and zoning next month. We have an application. We're just working out the details of that application. The hope is we get that to planning zoning and then to us. If that application falls apart, it would still be a violation, and we would continue to prosecute it like we have previously.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, I've got a question then. Now, that brings another question. So that's just up on top of the hill, and that water, that's on the west side of the road?
It's on the west side of the road.
So that water goes right down toward the Farnham's property on the west side of the road, and it ends up in there?
That's right.
That's right?
That's right.
Okay, so what I'm thinking is that if they come for a conditional use permit, there will probably be a want to send that water from the west side of the road there over to the east side of the road under Douglas, and then it would go down the same drainage that we're talking about where this culvert is. Okay, so I would say that, long-term, maybe an 18-inch culvert would be better. You know, I mean, hell, even a 24, but we don't know what's up there yet, so maybe they can look at that a little bit.
We can sure communicate with these guys. Right now, the initial plan that they have hired an engineering firm to look at it, and their proposal in front of us now is to drain the water to the west, to take it away from Douglas, drain their water to the west.
Oh, and go clear behind. Then where does... Then it goes...
Over the hill, and our staff's comment is, we need to drain each of them.
You gotta go somewhere with it.
If you're gonna go...
'Cause that comes out by the stoplight somewhere.
Eventually would make it down and to that, yeah, to the stoplight north, south of the stoplight.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you. Any other comments? All those in favor of CUP 20-1, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carried. Okay, next we have a request for, uh, PS 20-2. Is there a report from staff?
Certainly, Ms. Chairman, Commissioners. PS 20-2, Zero Road Industrial Parks Lots 3A and 3B, an application by 307 Energy LLC, or Energy 307 LLC, represented by Travis Wilkinson. We do have the applicant here if we've got questions. The proposed subdivision is currently has two buildings addressed as 1014 and 1028 Robertson Road. The subject property is owned Light Industrial, and we're Light Industrial on three sides and Urban Ag on the other. So we are on just south of Robertson Road, just south of Zero Road, so Zero headed south toward Natrona County Fire Protection, and we're on the west side of the road. So we started with one lot. We built two buildings on one lot, and now they are desirous of splitting that lot into two lots, so one building on each lot. Here's our subject property. You can see we are Light Industrial on three sides and Urban Ag to the west. Criteria for approval is the subdivision consistent with the development plan. The proposed subdivision is located in Neighborhood 14. That's our west belt loop Robertson Road of the 2016 development plan. The development plan recommends industrial development with residential closer to Mills. Staffs propose finding a fact, the proposed subdivision is developed and does comply with the development plan and zoning resolution. Criteria continued is the subdivision in conformance with the general provisions and the subdivision design standards. Staffs propose finding a fact, the subdivision has been processed in accordance with the applicable general provisions and subdivision design standards of the 2013 subdivision regulations. Again, they're really not developing much of a subdivision here. It's a lot split. Robertson Road's an existing road. You'll see in the next slides here, the town of Mills provides water. They don't have any issue with it. Both buildings are on septic. Both buildings are brand-new septics that Wyoming DEQ approved through the commercial permitting process. Criteria continued, has the applicant provided evidence of sufficient water supply system be acquired in terms of quality and quantity and dependability for the subdivision? Both structures currently have water supplied by the town of Mills. Criteria, provided evidence that the sewage disposal system proposed complies with state and local laws. Staffs propose finding a fact, both structures have newly installed septic systems approved through the Wyoming Department of Environmental Quality, DEQ. Does the subdivision appear to be compatible with the surrounding area and not detrimental to the future development of the area, and not detrimental to the health, safety, and general welfare of the inhabitants of the area and the county? Staffs propose finding a fact, the subdivision is developed. There'll be no detriment to the health, safety, and general welfare of the inhabitants of the area and the county. The applicant is working closely with Natrona County Road and Bridge Departments on paving requirements. So as we split this lot, the approaches changed around with the two buildings, and the applicant's working very closely with Mike Hagler on what needs to be paved and where those approaches will be set up, and as of late as today, they were in agreement with what needed to be done, and it's just a matter of time to get it scheduled. Public comment, as of tonight's meeting, no comments have been received. Notifications were sent out to property owners within one-quarter mile, and that's approximately nine property owners. Proposed motion, after July 14th, 2020 meeting, the planning zoning recommended approval of this agenda item incorporating the findings of fact as presented by staff. With that, I'd answer any questions the commission may have.
Question? Yes.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Bertollio.
So Jason, I'm looking at in the packet, there's an aerial picture which doesn't appear to conform to anything else in there, and I don't know if it's not the right picture.
If I may.
Hmm?
Your picture's backwards.
But even then, the... This shows the...
Are they gonna split that right down the middle?
Buildings are all over here and not...
I don't know what's wrong with your thing. It's flawed.
Am I missing something? So, well, here's...
Pictures are backwards.
No, he's talking about...
The buildings should be here and here because they're both on Robertson Road and this, or am I wrong?
Is that a proposed building?
No, those would be... They're already there, and you're right, Commissioner Bertollio, there would be a building there and a building there.
So this is not the right picture? This is an old... Excuse me, this is an old picture?
That's...
Okay, that works. All right. So they're both gonna have access off of Robertson Road?
Both of these buildings have been built in the last 18 months.
Okay.
14 was just last year.
Okay. That makes sense then. Okay. All right. I'm good. Thank you.
Okay. Yeah, I was looking at that, and I was thinking that was proposed buildings, too. I've got a question for you then, and maybe the applicant can answer that. This is the same area that we had somebody apply to put some tanks in one time, and that borders that field in that LI, or no, in the UA. There's a hay field right there. So they're aware of no big diesel tank storages and stuff like that in that field. aware of no big diesel tank storages and stuff like that in that property without a conditional use permit?
Yeah, they are aware. So any storage of flammable or combustible over 12,000 gallons would require a conditional use permit. So they would have to come back. The current uses they have there are underneath that threshold. So we're not storing large volumes of fuel there.
Okay. I know the neighbors there were really concerned about that storage when it came up four or five years ago. Okay. Anything else? Okay, thank you. I'll now open the hearing for PS 20-2. The hearing will be conducted in accordance with state statute, rules of, rules of Neptuna County Commission and other applicable laws. I would ask that any individuals come up who wish to talk, wish to speak, give your full name and address for the lectern. Anyone wishing to speak in favor?
Travis Wilkinson, Energy 307, 1615 East Yellowstone is our office. I don't have anything to add. Jason did a great job. Just if you guys have any questions.
Okay, any questions? Nope. Thank you.
All right, cool. Thanks.
Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Seeing none, I close the public hearing. Is there any discussion or a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve PS 20-2. To include staff's findings of fact.
Is there a second? It's been moved and seconded. Other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carried. Okay, Mr. County Attorney, can we talk about the rest of these in one and then pass them individually?
So, Mr. Chairman, Jason and I did discuss this and I think he's prepared to do a sort of a truncated presentation that would incorporate them and then ask you as a commission to entertain separate motions for each application. So I think Jason could probably lay it out in a little more detail.
Okay, great. Come on up, Jason. Let's talk about it for a minute.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, our applicant Declan is currently apparently in quarantine. So we're gonna call him on the phone and get him on the line.
Okay. Yeah, and we appreciate him not showing up. That's kind of a different phone. What happened to either phone? I guess since he's gonna be on there too, we ought to open the public hearing officially, right?
Yeah.
Hello, Declan?
Hello?
Hello, Declan?
Yep.
This is Jason Gutierrez from Neptuna County. How are you this evening?
Hi, great, thank you.
Well, we're ready to start the public hearing. We've got you on speakerphone and we're ready to get started.
Great, thanks very much.
Okay, I gotta get the right deal out here. Okay, the commission is going to hear about CUP 20-5 and CUP 20-4 and CUP 20-3. These hearings will be conducted in accordance with Wyoming State Statute, Rules of Neptuna County Commission and other applicable laws. I would ask those individuals who wish to speak to the commission to approach the lectern and state your full name and address. So Jason, can we have a report from staff? We're gonna handle all three and talk about all three and then have separate motions about each one.
Certainly, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, we have three separate cell towers. The heights vary a little bit with each one of them, but what we've proposed is we're gonna approve all three at 100-foot height, including all apparatus. I'll go through one of them in depth. It's the exact same findings of fact with all three of them. We just got three different locations. Same applicant. The three locations, we have two on 2026, one before Waltman, one after the rest drop at, just before Highland, I believe. And the other one is off of Highway 220 or west or east of the Gray Reef Reservoir on that, the hill right there. So those are the three different locations, the same findings of fact. And I guess as you pointed out, we'll have three separate motions for each, each one, but I'll go in depth in just this one. So CUP 20-3 and the others are conditional use permits to replace an existing communication towers with a total height of 100 feet. I would also, I guess, add that all three of these locations already have a tower. All we're doing is increasing the height of all three locations and proving them up to 100 feet. Location and zoning for this one, the parcel is located approximately four miles west of Highland on West US Highway 2026. The subject property and all surrounding properties are zoned RAM, ranching, agricultural and mining. Proposal Union has applied for a CUP to construct an 84-foot communication tower to replace their existing 45. They are requesting a total height of 100 feet to include all apparatus. So again, they're right now only requesting 84. We're gonna approve all three at 100 feet. That way they're covered into the future if they ever need to expand up to that other height. The proposed upgrades are necessary to allow Union Wireless to continue to provide services to the adjacent community in addition to enhancing their emergency services capabilities through FirstNet. FirstNet is a first responders network authority and is an independent authority authorized by Congress in 2012 to develop, build and operate a nationwide broadband network that equips first responders. Here is our tower location. We are west of Highland, really not too far from the county line, but we're headed west of Highland on the north side of Highway 2026. Again, we are all RAM. That's the red cross hatching. Conditional use permit criteria, this, again, this would be the same criteria for all three towers. One, proposed finding of fact, granting the conditional use permit will not contribute to an overburdening of county services. County services and infrastructure will not be necessary for this conditional use permit. The tower would provide needed cell service to the area, which will add to the E911 capabilities through the carrier's network and promote a greater coverage and reach for local law enforcement and emergency services. Two, will granting the CUP cause an undue traffic, parking, population density or environmental problems? Staff's proposed finding of fact, there'll be no impact to traffic, parking, population density. These towers are not manned. Routine maintenance for the tower and antennas will be limited. Will granting the CUP impair the use of adjacent property or alter the character of the neighborhood? Staff's proposed finding of fact, the surrounding ranch consists of approximately 1,200 acres. The addition of the taller tower will not impair the use of adjacent properties. Again, we already have an existing tower there. We're just adding height. Will granting the CUP detrimentally affect the public health, safety and welfare or nullify the intent of the development plan or the zoning resolution? Staff's proposed finding of fact, the proposed tower will be constructed in accordance with all applicable building, electrical and plumbing codes. With an approved CUP, the tower will comply with the zoning resolution and the development plan. This site will provide for wireless coverage to residents and travelers as well as provide for valuable E911 services. Neptuna County Airport has no concerns with this tower. That's the case with all three towers. We sent all three locations to Neptuna County International Airport and they do not have a concern with the height of these towers or the location. Key communication tower regulations artificially lit are required when the tower reaches 200 feet. Again, we are 100 feet here. So these will not be required to be lit. Setbacks, setbacks from roads and structures is 100% of the tower height. In this instance, the nearest road is a quarter mile away. All the towers meet the 110% setback. Documentation demonstrating need, the proposed site is situated to provide effective coverage to the area. The existing tower is not sufficient to provide adequate service. So a taller tower is needed. Public comment, to date, Neptuna County has received no comments on this proposal. Staff sent out notices to six neighbors within three miles. That is also consistent with the other ones. We have received no comments on any of the proposed towers. With that, I'd answer any questions the commission may have.
Question? Did you, the landowner there, you didn't hear anything back from them?
Not, not in this instance. No, they, they were able to get ahold of the landowner, get the landowner's signature in this, in this case. And we were in good shape there.
Okay, I know they've had some problems before.
This, this applicant was able to get ahold of that landowner and it wasn't a concern.
Okay. On, then on CUP 20-4, I was just curious, you say it's Armento Road, but really it's closer to 2026. But is that because of the access road comes off of the Armento Road? Yeah, okay.
That is correct. The address is based upon the road that you turn off of to access it. And in that case, you do access it off Armento rather than Highway 2026. I can get that pulled up, but if we, if we can situate ourselves to the town of Armento, this tower is directly east of Armento and maybe quarter, half mile off of 2026.
Waltman.
Yeah, east of Waltman.
East of Waltman.
Yep.
Okay. Other discussion? Okay, thank you. I'll now open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak in favor? Are you still on the phone?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, yes, I'm obviously in favor. I really appreciate you allowing me to participate via telephone and also just nothing to add to Jason's report except to thank him and Trish for all the assistance in processing these applications.
Okay. You're gonna be just about twice as high as the existing tower, roughly, looks like?
Correct.
Okay. Are you gonna go all the way, are most of your towers, I mean, there's another one down by Manitas, are all of them gonna be like this?
Mr. Chairman, what's really driving this project right now is FirstNet colocating on the Union Towers. So that's really the main driver for the additional height. So that Union's antennas have adequate separation from the FirstNet equipment, which is the national emergency infrastructure that's going in.
Okay. Other questions? Yeah, so it's not really another cell, cell tower that somebody can hook onto?
Mr. Chairman, yes, this, this, these, all of these three sites are very over-engineered to accommodate other carriers if the case arises. So they would be co-locatable for for other carriers to possibly go on there.
Okay. Okay, well, any questions about any of the three? All right. Well, thank you very much. Jason, you've got his name and spelling and all that.
Yeah.
Okay, great. Okay, anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Okay, I'll close the public hearing. Is there a motion or questions from staff? Individually, please.
Mr. Chairman, I'd move to approve CUP 20-3 along with the findings of facts of staff.
Okay, is there a second? Further discussion? All those in favor of passing CUP 20-3, say aye.
Aye.
All right, those opposed? Motion carried. Now, do we have a motion on CUP 20-4?
Mr. Chairman, I'd move to approve CUP 20-4 along with the findings of fact by staff.
I have a second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve CUP 20-4. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carried. Is there a motion on 20-5?
Mr. Chairman, I'd move to approve CUP 20-5 along with staff's findings of fact.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve CUP 20-5. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carried. Thank you, sir, for being on the phone tonight. You got them all approved. How about that?
That's great. I really appreciate your time. Thank you very much.
Okay.
Take care.
If you do the one down close to Manita, put a Verizon tower on it for me, would you?
I will pass that along.
Okay, thank you.
Thank, thank you very much. Take care. Bye.
Public comment. Anyone, anyone wishing to address us tonight during public comment? Commissioner comment? Commissioner Kaufman?
I was just gonna share a little good news. It's not necessarily directly related to the commission, but obviously we've, I'm related directly and involved with tourism. And in mid-April, our occupancy numbers were just under 20%. And last week, we took a look and we were around 55%. So it's really nice to see a bit of a rebound in that space. Obviously, it's dollars in that we're not responsible for, but people will come and spend and create jobs and sales tax and all that stuff. So I always say tourism is a good story and right now, again, it's a good story. So that would be my comments tonight.
Great. Thank you. Commissioner Chadwick?
I have nothing. Thank you.
Commissioner Milne? Commissioner Bertollio?
Nothing. Thank you.
Really? Okay. I heard that the EIS is out for the, what do they call it? The Douglas area?
The Converse County.
Converse County and, but it's out for 30-day public comment?
Uh, yeah, yeah, it's, it's the final.
It'll probably go through, but.
Yeah.
Pretty quick.
Yeah.
Well, we'll hope that spurs on some activity. I heard today that the last rig in the state of Wyoming just went down. They're stacking it on site. Did you hear anything about that? Yeah. And, but I did hear the same, from the same guy, that maybe there's a possibility that a couple of rigs will go up in Douglas. But we'll hope so. But I haven't got anything else. Meeting adjourned. Thank you.